Good evening, welcome everyone to our March 4th Board Meeting. Superintendent Wondry?
Yes.
Do you want to go ahead and...
Introduce Dr. Stan, who's going to introduce probably some students to the pledge.
I am.
So Dr. Stan is our principal at Summer Junior High. He's here this evening to present, but he's also here to share with us the introduction of some students to the pledge. I got around some kids. Alright Jeff, take it away.
So ladies, if you can stand up for us please. I have Vanessa Power here, Paige Bellings, and Ginger Grizzett are going to do this in the pledge.
Fantastic.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
And as fast as they came in.
That caused me one pizza right there.
Yeah. One pizza. Well, we'll do it with the shoulder.
Okay, so, Mr. Stanley, you want to come up and share with us today's name?
Presenting school, absolutely. Jerry, do I have this question to you? Got it? Oh, CP's. Oh, that little thing, thank you for... Man, it's never good.
Okay, ready to go here. Always a pleasure to be back here presenting this now at my third school. I've been here for maybe my seventh year, so always exciting to be here. Just a quick review of the board goals. We know there are three board goals that we focus on, but within that, several strategies and benchmarks that we want to accomplish at each and every K-12 building. So we'll work on a lot of different things. We know these are tied closely to the top 10 and 10 that Michigan put out a couple of years ago. And the principals are in close communication with Mr. Bradford with regard to what we're presenting, so you don't see the same thing from each school that's here every time. So we have a couple of interesting ones, I think, related to board goal one, which of course is a high-quality curriculum, and second board goal two, which is quality instruction and a learning-centered environment. So our first board goal that we're going to focus on is the... For board goal one. I won't read the whole thing, but kind of an interesting thing, college and career readiness, which of course has always been important, but just recently, Mr. Hamilton will talk more about this, became... Bills were passed that all schools K-12 needed to put substantial effort into having kids ensure... What this is saying is that when kids are finished with high school, they're prepared for a post-secondary education, whether that be in a technical field or a college, and all the way from kindergarten to 12th grade. So we're going to talk about that, making sure that students are leaving Summer with those steps necessary to achieve that. The next one, and we're going to also talk about our learning coaches and coaching cycles, which is, you know, absolutely an excellent thing to have. It's something that I came from a district in... Where we didn't have learning coaches, so when I came to LaPire, it was new. And tremendous asset for our learning coaches to be here, providing the support for the teachers to ensure that the instruction in the classroom is top-notch, and we've spent a lot of time with that. So the two things we'll present on are those two things. I brought some of Summer's finest with me tonight. I have my learning coaches back there, Karen Allman and Lisa Pasick, who I'll turn it over to here in a minute. I also had Kim Van Haddig, Kim. Kim, and Robin Spitz, who's new to us this year. She's a counselor for survivors of Lake Orion. And Mr. Hamilton, who's the associate principal. So with that, I think Karen and Lisa are going to take it over.
What's the magic of this pledge?
Sometimes it's play, so it eventually gets her.
So we'll put her in a number of times. So as we were planning for today's presentation, we first were thinking, actually, college and career readiness, coaching cycles, they don't seem to have a lot in common. We don't usually do coaching cycles with kids around their college readiness, but as we all got together and were talking, we realized, wow, like these really are connected. They are both about capitalizing on people's strengths for their own personal growth, raising awareness of their capabilities, setting goals, tracking your development, and celebrating successes. So thinking about those things for both our students and our teachers' professional growth, really capable capacity building for all. So Karen and I are going to be talking about coaching support and give you kind of a window into what that looks like on a day-to-day basis. Both Karen and I have been in the district a long time. Two and three decades, actually. And we are both former classroom teachers. Karen was at Maple Grove, Elba and Hadley, as a lower L, and I was upper L, Happy Field and Turrell. And about a little bit over 10 years ago, we both transitioned into coaching as coaching became a thing in LaPire. And basically, we are pretty sure that we have the best job in the district because we get to support kids through supporting teachers. So the teaching role, as you know, has changed dramatically over the last few decades. The awareness and the knowledge that teachers are expected to bring to their work has grown exponentially, as everything else. It's not possible for teachers to close their door and just do their own thing anymore. The call to implement research-based best practices really requires that teachers use, you know, best practices, brain science. We have to be knowledgeable about disciplinary literacy, and we also have to be paying attention to the social-emotional intelligences so that we can equip our students to be problem solvers, to communicate, to be able to become, you know, members of society that can listen to other people's opinions and evaluate, and really persevere through adversity. So supporting teachers through this complex work is really the highlight of our coaching role. It allows us to really put our beliefs and our goals into practice. So one of the main foundations is that we really believe that true lasting growth can only be built on a strong foundation, beginning with person's strengths. You have to start with where someone is and work and affirm and appreciate where they are and where they want to go. So we do this as classroom teachers with kids, you start with where they're at. And with teachers, as we think about where are their strengths, where can we tap into what they're interested in, what are their... What's their edge of their learning, and how do we identify opportunities for them? So we realize that, you know, back when we were all in school, we had had learning coaches. So sometimes it's a little unclear what do coaches do. We don't have that personal experience of like, say, what does a third-grade teacher do? So Karen's going to kind of break it down and give you an idea of what it looks like on a day-to-day basis for us.
Yeah, so in a nutshell, our main job is in the... There's something called coaching cycles. So that's a short period, it lasts like one to two months usually, and we get to focus on a specific unit of study or a specific goal that they have for their kids. The goals are student-centered, so that means we focus on something we want the students to be able to do. And we use data to track that, and the goals are measurable. And we work side-by-side with the teacher during that coaching cycle to think about specific instructional practices that they can use to help the kids meet that goal. But we also work with teachers outside of coaching cycles, so let's just do the other things here. We support them in data analysis, we work with professional development, curriculum work, and also meeting with the different PLCs every single week. So we get to lots of things. Jeff, my arrow doesn't appear.
I'm going to cover it up a little bit. Try to hit the key.
Thank you for your support.
Awesome, thank you.
Don't go far. Yes.
So one of the cool things about getting to work with teachers in all these different areas is that we're able to help make connections. So we get to be all over the building, especially in Summer, if you've been there, it's such a spread-out building. There are some teachers who don't see each other for one or two weeks at a time, they're in different ways. So we might have an English teacher in this wing and a science teacher in this wing working on very similar goals, and they might not know it. They don't eat lunch together, they don't see each other very often, but we can help to make those connections because we can say, hey, you're looking on this, and you're working on this. What if we got together and we kind of build that knowledge more? We get to meet with teachers one-on-one, and also with the small groups with PLCs, and also with our whole staff professional development. And so we kind of get to listen to their feedback and their questions and ideas in all those different levels, and then we get to bring that into the other levels. So we feel like a big part of our job is being able to make connections in all those places to help build teacher growth. And there's been a lot of research about what's the best kind of professional development? Is it sending people to a conference? Is it bringing in an outside trainer? What is it? And they found out that really there's three main things that made good PD. Things that are sustained over time, and things that are relevant, and things that are job embedded. And so we feel like our role as coaches helps us hit all three of those things. We're sustained over time because we get to work with teachers over one or two or three months and have that continued conversation so they can grow their thinking. And it's relevant because they pick the goal. They pick something that they want to work on, an issue that they're seeing with their students. And it's job embedded because it's right there, right? They're not going somewhere else. It's in the real classroom room with the real materials and the real kids. Yeah, so when coaching first started in LaPire, it was a lot about modeling and about being an expert. They would say, oh, the coach, the coach can kind of show you what to do. But that shifted, and thank God, because we're both former elementary teachers. We're now working in secondary building, right? If you're trying to come in as an expert or to show someone how to do something, that would not fly. So instead, we've had the opportunity, not just us, all the coaches from LaPire, we've had the opportunity to get training in things like cognitive coaching and student-centered coaching, where we can learn how to have conversations with teachers to help them plan and reflect and grow their own thinking. So really, it's us working side-by-side with the teachers. We're not the experts showing them what to do. And so since this model isn't just about showing an expert, an expert showing someone how, it means that we're not just limited to working with new teachers or with teachers who have really tricky classes. We get to work with everybody. And that's really cool because we're here to support all teachers because all teachers have kids who are trying to learn something. And we like to think about it as the analogy of sports, right? So it's not just the 0-16 football teams that get a coach. Super Bowl teams get a coach too, and so we kind of feel the same way.
There's going to be a big cheer right there.
Something to make it again, yeah.
Awesome analogy. So whether we're coaching rookies or... Whether we're coaching first-year rookies or, you know, 20-year veterans, even though it shifts depending on the teacher's personal goals, where their kids are, what they're noticing about the students, where they are in their curriculum, the coaching goals are very personalized, but we always follow a certain routine, a certain protocol. And we do need to show a little example. We're going to give you visual.
Remember this time, you showed up and you went by arrows.
Yes. Don't worry, we've got it.
Alright, so this is just a quick visual. You don't have to read everything, it's just kind of breaking down that every time we start with a student-centered goal, based on what is it that the teacher wants the students to focus on, what we want the students to learn, know, understand, and do, and then what are the things that we're going to do to assess it? So this teacher was looking not just at the mathematical goals of statistics, but also she was noticing that she really wanted the kids to do a lot more small group and whole group discussion. So we had a couple of different assessment pieces there. The teacher also breaks it down, thinking about what are the instructional things that I really want to focus on to help me move the students toward those goals? We articulate those goals and then think about what are the changes? What happens with the data? In this one, the teacher actually was able to go and observe some teachers at the high school. You'll see at the top it says "cycle two." This teacher also had worked on a cycle where she was also teaching a guided academics class, and she was kind of researching a subset, it was kind of like actual research, researching a subset of those students and how her work in guided academics was impacting both their self-perception with a student perception survey, and then how is it manifesting in their actual general class too. So had a lot of different pieces going there. And one of the things that's very important to note here is the importance of reflection. And we know that you don't necessarily learn just from having an experience. You learn when you reflect on that experience. So our reflection conversations are really crucial for helping teachers kind of flesh out what is it that happened, what is it that I noticed, and what am I learning about my students? What am I learning about my own practice? We also reflect on a building level. So the principals collect data on the long-term impacts of the coaching cycle work. While they're observing in the classrooms, they are able to see evidence of the teachers' new learning, new practices, and how they're being transferred into long-term teaching.
Yeah, so we want to talk a little bit more about data though. Data's super important, right? It shows up in everything. When we first switched to this coaching model, the focus on data, it was kind of intimidating. You know, we're trying to think about what kind of data can we grab in a month to show growth? But it's turned into one of our favorite parts of doing this because we get to be really creative with data. So what we get to do is we get to pick data to track with the teachers that measures exactly what it is that they want their kids to know and be able to do. And sometimes just thinking about, well, how can we measure that? That actually helps us clarify more what it is we want them to be able to do. We think we know, but when we have to try to measure it, then it helps us fine-tune what our goal really is. The conversations about exactly what we want kids to be able to do is kind of incredible when you get to this level. We wanted to give one example of some ways that we can save up. There's an eighth-grade teacher that I've been working with. In first semester, we noticed that there were a lot of missing assignments, right? A lot of kids weren't doing work. We were trying to look at their work to see how they were doing, and there were a lot of kids that weren't represented. So we decided to tackle that head-on this semester. So we started just by clarifying, going from an assumption like, hey, it seems like there's a lot of missing work, to actually digging in and finding out what it was. We started by actually calculating the percentage of the missing work from the first semester per unit, and also per assignment, right? So we can look and see, were there certain kinds of assignments that the kids struggled with more? We also surveyed the students to get their perception of it, and were there role models that they were identifying that we didn't know about yet? And then we were able to see that, yeah, there were a couple of kinds of assignments that a lot more kids were struggling to turn in. So then the teacher could be a lot more intentional about the way he set those assignments up so that they can become more successful with them. And the student surveys also showed us that there's some things that the kids didn't quite know how to do. They were another power schools, we thought they were, right? So taking time to go back in and teach them how to track their own missing assignments has helped to increase that. But another cool part, Lisa had mentioned that coaching cycles are a lot like actual research. So we've shared this with the kids, right? Every couple of weeks, we check that missing assignment percentage again and we share it with the classes. So they're in on it now, and so they're seeing their own percentages, and they're also seeing their teacher being really reflective about his own learning and about the stuff that's going on in the classroom too. So that's just one kind of cool way that we've been using data. That sometimes data is like the baby scary data, but it can be fun too.
And one thing I'll add is this plan is the result of years and years of iterations of trying to kind of document more and more precisely what it is that we're trying to do with students and our teachers and students. And I remember as we, you know, got more and more clear, originally it was kind of like, ooh, gosh, our teacher's going to feel weird about us like having all this stuff. But actually, it's been so affirming because they really appreciate seeing all of their hard work and their efforts documented and represented, to see their thinking and all of the work and time that they dedicate when they're working with us. So they really come to appreciate being part of this. Oh, so that little clip there, sorry, no, that's right. It was just a... This was showing how the teacher was tracking not just the percentage, but the quality of the contributions that the kids were making. So even though maybe fewer kids explained an answer, we realized that, okay, the first time, there probably were a lot of kids shouting out, kind of shouting over other students. And so she was able to see that the quality of their contributions was increasing, and then adding that onto the premium post-test and reflection, so. So we were going to have, we wanted to have a lineup of people come in and talk to you. So instead, we asked them a couple of questions, and have their results right here. So this is Russ, our Spanish, one of our Spanish teachers. He and his team were really focusing on ways to increase assessment, improve the assessment of students speaking in Spanish. And so they were working on that goal of having the students become more knowledgeable about what were the exemplars so that they could self-assess based on, was it video or audio? Anyway, exemplars.
So this is Nancy, she teaches science, and her coaching cycle was around setting up norms for classroom discussion. She wanted the kids to have more independent discussions. So she just, she talked about using the actual data really helped her to shorten transition times to make the whole class more effective and make them more discussion time.
Susan Leeley, she's a special ed teacher, and she was noticing that her students that were in ninth grade were really shutting down and being resistant to accepting her help. And so she was finding ways to have just the relationships that help the work be closer to their content level, and that is her positive experience there.
This is Matt Noah, he's a PLTW teacher, he also does a little bit of biology. Our cycle focused on student self-assessment, how that's related to what the kids are actually learning, like are they tied together? And then a side effect though, even though he's a science teacher, we ended up thinking a lot about kids' reading levels and how that affected their work in science.
Okay, this is Cynthia Brown, and she's kind of a mid-career teacher coming to LaPire for the first time. So she was really wanting to focus on ways to get the kids more engaged with both their small group, the whole group, and noticing how that would impact their work. So she had really made a lot of positive shifts in thinking about intentional ways to use group work so that all the students were accountable for thinking about problems.
And in preschool, she had a school picture taken the first day of school. She was engaged in making all the...
Really happy to be here.
So this is Jamie Gregor, she teaches English. Our cycle, a lot of her thinks about lots of small things she can make to her instructional practice. And so I just wanted to share the lesson she said. As a result, I've been open to trying new practices, even though it gives me anxiety. And we love that, we love her honesty, and we wanted to end with this one because we feel like this reflects what we think about everything, right? That teachers, they take their job very seriously and they take it very personally. And when they choose to open their doors and let us in and work side-by-side with them, that's a big deal, and they're putting themselves out there. So the fact that it sometimes causes them anxiety, we try not to, right? We try to make it a safe space, but we just wanted to acknowledge that they, they're very open and willing to get that a go. And then we just wanted to end with just a quick thought. As we were going back and forth with some different phrases, they kept coming up, and one that kept coming up was the idea of lifelong learning. And that's one that gets overused, right? You can just kind of roll it out and you can hear it. But really, I feel like in this job, I get the chance to walk that walk every day because every coaching opportunity I have, I get to learn something new about learning and about teaching. And I feel like that means the teachers I work with, they get to walk that walk too.
And I just thought, even in the process of planning for this, I had the opportunity to be in a classroom with a teacher with whom I had been at a conference with the previous weekend, Saturday, in East Lansing. And we were anxious to try out some new strategies for student engagement, and one of them allowed me to have an opportunity to talk with one of her struggling students who has a lot of truancy issues, is very frustrated, shut down, doesn't want to come to school. And I realized that I'm kind of using the win-win discipline mentality that we learned about before. And talking to this boy about, you know, what do you want to do, man? Like, what do you want to do? I'm like, well, I think I want to be a cook. And it just, like the intersection of all of these things, the math conference, the win-win, the CAG and the Hatties effect sizes, and college and career readiness, realizing that the college and career readiness isn't just a state mandate with boxes to check for us, it could be the foundation of how we reach kids, how we get them purpose, and what's their why for being at school. So the thing about being a coach is just the synergy of being able to weave all of these pieces together to really create a strong fabric for supporting our students and supporting our staff. So we're very excited, excited to be able to share with you what coaching looks like.
And I'm glad you're out to see the evolution of the coaching in the seven years I've been here too, because it's come a long way from where we were. And also with those two ladies, that's not an act or a passion, that's what we're like pretty much every day. Much appreciated. So I'm going to turn it over now to Mr. Hamilton, who's going to lead us on the college and career readiness.
Alright, college and career readiness, as Jeff mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, a few laws have come down over the last couple of years regarding college and career readiness and the different requirements that come down to the schools and the districts because of some of this legislation. So college and career readiness, what is it? Basically, to me, it's everything that we teach kids that gets them ready for life. Specifically, life right after high school as far as being ready for college, post-secondary education, their career, whatever, wherever their path takes them, it's our job to get them ready. So the state of Michigan, this document comes from them, breaks down the different skill sets that are in their mind what we need to create college and career-ready students. They break them down in four different categories. Technology and tools, argument, reasoning, communication, and collaboration, and problem solving. So big picture here, at Summer, everything we do is involved in career and college readiness in some way. So you hear a lot about student-centered learning, which is one of our main focuses at Summer. All the coaching cycles are a comeback to student-centered learning, and all the curriculum is designed towards student-centered learning. All of our PD is designed to get at that. The heart of student-centered learning is these skills that also go into career and college readiness. Other things that we do, such as the Positivity Project, which is basically teaching positive character traits for kids and how to build relationships, and teaching them how to interact with each other goes into this. Athletics is another example, something you might not think of, but teaching kids how to juggle athletics and activities and grades, and teaching them sportsmanship and teamwork. All of this goes into creating well-rounded people that are ready for the world outside us. So that's kind of a big picture of career and college readiness overall. I'm going to go back though and focus a little bit, and that's what the remainder of our presentation today is going to be about, that last sentence in the paragraph. And this is the art of the strategy one, that two underneath the board goal one that Jeff mentioned at the beginning. Basically, the idea that districts must incorporate grade-level career development education within their K-12 educational delivery system. So along with all those things that we do, teaching kids the skills that they need, the other piece of this is career development education. So the program that we use to teach career development education is called Zello. And Peter, to tell us more about Zello and how it works and how to make sure we're hitting all these standards and benchmarks set forth by the state regarding career and college readiness. Our Mr. Van, Mrs. Spitz, our counselors, that's all.
So these are what our eighth-grade students end up wanting to... And as you read this on the screen, I'd like to read a couple of sentences that really focus in on what we do at Summer. So at Summer, counselors have utilized the Zello software to help guide all of our students with their future readiness. We presented lessons that gave students a chance to discover how their interests can develop into careers. Students investigated their personality styles, explored how their own personality style can help them at home, school, work, and other aspects of the life. Students investigated aspects of a career match assessment. They reflected on their results, and they explored aspects that matched with their career and their interests. We went into classrooms, we met with our social studies teachers, and we collaborated with how are we going to use the software to the best of its ability? There are so many things that Zello has to offer, and so many different ways that we can share this information with our students. So in eighth grade and ninth grade, these are some things that they hit on, some things they focused on. They completed assignments, which we reviewed, and we were able to give feedback to each of our students. They gave us a chance to make sure that they had a chance to do that reflection part that our counterparts had been speaking about just earlier. And it also gives us a chance to kind of track what they're doing from year to year. The Zello program goes from K-12, and so it works out for us in a way that we can...
The ZELLO program goes from K-12, and so it works out for us in a way that we can kind of follow them along as things move on year to year. We're going to show you a, a two-minute clip here of exactly what the kids see and how they can use this program.
ZELLO's built-in lessons are ready to go. Fully interactive, personal, live learning experiences that help your students hone the tools they need to navigate their future. Covering age-appropriate topics like transitioning to high school, choosing post-secondary pathways, and understanding work-life balance. Lessons help prepare students for whatever the future brings. Lessons are flexible, you can include them in any classroom, including core subjects, during advisory periods, or sign as completely self-directed learning. Whether used on their own or integrated with other discussions and project work, students will learn about self-advocacy, time management, having a curricular plan, and much more. Before beginning the lesson, in most cases, students need to complete tasks in ZELLO by saving their favorite careers in schools, adding interests and skills, or taking an assessment. Lessons are structured with an introduction, a hall of activities that apply to what they're learning, and finished with summary activities. They start by warming students up with an introduction to key concepts for the topic they need to understand. A variety of question types and interactions keep learning engagement for students. This can include role-playing story, new vocabulary, or understanding possible compromises they may need to make through a game of Would You Rather? Students then apply what they learned to themselves. Here's where the prerequisites activities come in. Students analyze their own interests, experiences, or preferences for truly personalized learning. Through a series of reflection questions, they're encouraged to critically reassess and evaluate their choices. Idea serves are available if they need a helpful prompt. Students end the lesson on a letter note by reviewing what they learned. This can take different forms depending on the topic: true or false questions, revisiting their earlier answers, or thinking about how prepared they are for a certain challenge. Meanwhile, you can keep up with your students' lesson progress by writing reports on their activity and see their individual answers within your educator tools. Try lessons out for yourself by viewing as a student in your demo student account. With lessons, your students will cover new skills and insights, and you'll seamlessly strengthen their knowledge and professional skills, getting them ready to take on tomorrow.
So that's a nice broad overview for you, which means how ZELLO works. It's very interactive. The program is much more exciting than our previous career development, which sometimes felt like pulling teeth. So the kids are really enjoying getting in there and clicking around. It's very user-friendly. And so what we've provided for you here is a, and this, you know, obviously written it now, but for your reference, it's a K-12 guide, so it shows you what's expected at each grade level, and it also then gives the key activities, which are really the activities that the state is requiring to meet, you know, the career standards. There's tons of activities in ZELLO, but it's the key activities we want to focus on. The really neat part is that Mrs. Biz and I can sit in our office, and we've actually created assignments in the program, and so we can review the assignments at our desk and give lots of feedback for kids, which is quick and easy, and the way they like to text, and all of the technology they use. They seem to really kind of be enjoying the fact that we're like, you know, communicating with them through the technology. You know, you did a great job on the assignment, or no, you didn't quite finish your four-year plan, you need some classes here, or math prerequisites, whatever. So we can review those in our office and then call them down if they need to. So it's a grade-by-grade plan, it's cumulative, so the idea is that you're building these things into your grade levels so that at the end you get a, an electronic portfolio which covers the K through 12 timeframe, which gives the kids a very nice rounded, you know, if they're completing so many things at each level, they have a lot of stuff in there by the time you're in 12th grade. So having said that, we want to talk a little bit about some of the things that we've offered for our students recently. Do you want to talk a little bit about any of those? We've had some great opportunities for our students, things that they have done this year outside of our building. We've worked on the Michigan Career Quest, where we've had students go to Dork Federal, and they had experiences there that I, which I would have, meeting different people in the field, talking with them specifically about what their roles are. The eighth grade county-wide career fair was also held in the fall, and that was for our eighth grade students, kind of along the same lines. They had a chance to meet people in different types of careers, whether it be something that required a college degree, whether it was something that was a skilled trade, gave them a lot of variety in our opportunity night and along the same lines, letting them know everything that they have out there that's available for them. We also now have a drop-off convention coordinator, so we have somebody that's working with us, Sally Volker, is coming in and she's with us on a regular basis to help students on all ends of our continuing. Yeah. And that helps the kids see value in the kids that kind of don't always connect with school, looking at them, thinking about something that might actually do some meaning, and give them some direction, then we're able to kind of hopefully give them some focus. And Mr. Wong, my dad was our keynote speaker at our eighth grade county-wide career fair, so that's very nice to have him there. So we're going to be next steps, and then we're going to finish those out. We're going to be exploring some opportunities for workplace experiences, trying to get kids out into the community more. One of the things that ZELLO offers that's really cool is they have biographies in there that the kids can watch, and so there's all these biographies of people and what they do on a day-to-day basis, and they have videos showing them in their career, doing whatever that they do. And so now, next year, we just want to expand on some of the things in the program that we weren't able to do this year because it's new to us and we're just, you know, kind of getting into it. It's a new program. We regularly get emails from them saying, okay, try this, check this out, this is coming up, maybe we tweaked this a little bit. So it's always changing. We've been let go over the weekend, almost every weekend. So there's lots of lessons. But anyway, that's a glimpse of ZELLO and the mother's wing, so thank you for our time, Mr. Stanley.
Sure.
Close out?
Close out. Come on, this is a very big thing, not just because it is, it's now passed in a law that schools need to be doing this, but we, we do need to find better ways to explore opportunities for kids in the ninth grade for career paths. And so those next steps there are in the board goals, is one of the things that we need to work on is exploring those opportunities. It's not as easy as with the ninth graders, they can't drive, so it's not like they can go places. So you have to be creative with what you do with field trips, bringing people into school, and we're definitely going to make that a focus moment forward to next year. So, speaking of next year, looking forward to being back next year and speaking about some other great things we have going on at ZEMER. It's a pleasure being here.
Thank you. Any, any questions? You guys got comments?
We do have a comment, right? So you all may have to stick around later if you don't want to. I really appreciate that you come in and do these presentations. It, it, this applies to all of you, but Lisa and Karen said we're not experts, but yet continue to speak to prove to us that they in fact are the experts in what they say. And then to hear, you know, from the counseling side, these are more new, innovative, constantly changing ways to get things out there, it just again highlights all of us, the commitment level that you all have to your jobs and to our kids, and can't think of enough. I mean, it's just going to help all of the kids in the future just go on and do bigger and better things. Well, I'll be able to say we knew them when and look where they are now, and it's going to be a learning tool for all of you, so thank you very much.
They coached you right into that state. That's right. You're powerless against the coach.
Yeah, I want to say thank you too, because I want to say the learning coaches that we've put into this district is the best thing that this district has done. I mean, our kids are getting such great attention to them, and the passion behind the learning coaches, and the teachers opening up and welcoming it, that's been really amazing to watch this process transform. And the other thing that I really took in is the connections. I mean, I can see all of the connections that you guys are making with the teachers, the staff, the students, looking at the future, so really thank you, appreciate it.
I just have to say, I sit on the Lapeer ISD board, and just a meeting or two ago, they were talking about how Lapeer has played so much in the learning coaches and the PD professional development. And I was proud, sitting there, yes, we're doing, you know, we were being talked about across the county, and that was really awesome to sit there as a representation of Lapeer Schools. And so I just appreciate all your efforts, I know that, I love your passion, you know, it takes passion to teach students, and I just, I love the passion, I love the enthusiasm. You guys are doing great, I really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's incredible. It's nice to hear, and that teachers are willing to take the help and like the help. You know, first thing you think of is, you're going to teach me how to teach, and, but it doesn't sound like that, it sounds like it's a win-win all the way around, which is phenomenal. Obviously, we didn't have coaching, teacher-coaches wouldn't be much at school. They let us through anyhow. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Um, let's see, public comment? I don't see any public comment for this evening, so we'll move right into our action items. So the first is our consent grouping. So we have approval of the February 12, 2020 special meeting, second reading and adoption of the board policy 2431, and an overnight trip request for the varsity soccer girls to travel to Holland. Anyone have anything they'd wish to be removed from this grouping? Okay, hearing none?
We'll make a motion on the reading of the minutes and policies be waived and the consent agenda items, the group is present. Support.
Okay, I have a motion and a support. Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mrs. Becker?
Aye.
Mr. Hagedel?
Aye.
Mr. Noel?
Aye.
Mrs. Philbeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion here. Okay, moving to our next item on the agenda is the closure of the Mayfield Elementary School. Do we have any discussion on this topic?
Geez, I hope so. I, I, I didn't know we were directly to vote on that. Mr. Meisner is here. Mr. Meisner and Field and I spent quite a bit of time there today, and I know Summer and Craig were part of the community forum, and I, I think it's important for anybody who's here, anybody who cares, anybody who might tune in online and want to see why the world is doing this, I think we have to share a bit of that. So I don't know if you want to, and either of you want to talk about what happened as a result of the forum? I can tell you when I was out there today, I kept looking, Mark and I are proud graduates of Mayfield Elementary School, and a long, long time ago, we were there, and sadly, it looks a lot like it did when I was there, a long, long time ago. I can see why, frankly, it's up for consideration. It pains me greatly to even think about taking this school offline, but then, why wouldn't that be a part of this? I closed my kid's school, I closed my wife's school, why shouldn't I close my own? I, I hope that the next board going forward has a much easier time, I don't think you're going to have to worry about closing any more schools. That, that unfortunately will have been done. I asked Mark Meisner specifically to be here today, we had quite a discussion, and you're, Mark and I, today about a lot of things. It was down in the pits where the boilers are, I got lots of something dripped on my head in one of the rooms that I was in today. It has an interesting odor to it. The water is, again, it's acceptable, but it's not preferable. It is a great old community school that, I think, Mark, the, and I would invite Mark to speak. Mark has a very good perspective on it, and he's dealt with this building over the years in a way that none of us ever have worked with. You know, knowing that, I mean, Mark, what you've said, that 45 years of your life, least associated with that building?
Yeah.
I don't know if you would like to hear from Mark, but I would encourage Mr. Meisner to give his perspective on the building.
Absolutely.
I, Mr. Meisner's very excited to do that. The floor is yours.
I just want to assure you that, as Mike asks, is there a way that we can keep the building online? And maybe run it another year? And it's not a, you know, nobody has a crystal ball that says it'll run another year, five years, but the reality is, five years ago, Matt came to me and said, the boilers were down. Is there a way that you can find a fix, and a quick fix, and a cheap fix, to buy us another year, put this building through another school year? We did that, that was five years ago. And here we sit today, and as I told Mike, it's not buying a boiler. The boilers, the $250,000 that we've talked about throwing around in the room, but the real reality is, you're talking a million by the time you change the infrastructure that the boiler is supplying, that it's all rotted. And, you know, you spend $300,000, put a boiler in there, and then the infrastructure goes down, what do you do then? So the life of the building has served its purpose, done good to the community, a lot of kids through there, and I was telling Mike today, we were standing in the cafeteria, which is a cafeteria, a hallway, it's crazy when you look at it, your kids deserve to be in a school like they have at Lynch, Schidler, Murphy. I mean, not that they're outrageously beautiful, but they're a heck of a lot nicer school than what Mayfield is. So I know it's a landmark to a lot of people, it is myself, but I know that the life of it is, been used up, so it's a great decision to stop spending good money, a building that not going to serve us much longer, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mark, and he, he's always really struggling, I mean, this is a big deal for me, and he put it really, really nicely, it was sort of the, you know how we buy things and it has that use-by date? We've exceeded the use-by date so much, and so my question was, okay, why, I get voting, it's, it's, it's time to take that building offline, but my question was, why do we do it so that it's effective starting next year? Is there, I don't want overcrowded classrooms. I don't want people coming in with the, for all of you, because I don't want to hear, all of the people coming into you saying, what did you do? Why did you do this? Why did you shift all of these kids around? That building was still good, it could have been used. And it's a great little community school, it's, yes, all of those things, but it's time. Unfortunately, it's time, and it's sort of that use-by date, you've exceeded that greatly. And when you talk about all of the sort of fallout from the many things that can be anticipated that can and probably would go on if that building's kept open much longer, and as you all know, and again, I'm just saying this maybe just to justify it in my own mind, but better to have that pre-planning, better to organize in advance than to, in the middle of a school year, have to deal with all the fallout of what could happen if that boiler goes down, and the shifting of all of those kids, we're not even a choice. And the other thing is for sure, is Mark says aye, there isn't anything that we can't, with chewing gum and, you know, rubber bands, have work around.
Mark was really kidding about that.
Yeah. Now I know where the chewing gum's from. But it, it's one of these situations where if we are confronted with something like that in the midst of the school year, we don't have the resources to make all of those changes. So, it's my two cents worth, Mark, I really appreciate you coming and talking. Mark was good for me today, because I, I, I'm lamenting with Mark, again, there's a couple of guys that go back a lot of years now, who came out of that school, and I think, how do we put a positive spin on this? And he said, the positive spin, we just, it's not that it's a horrible place to be, it's still a great learning environment, but your kids will need a better facility, better opportunities forward. That's perfect. And so, thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
I lived the life of being in a staff in Lansing when their boilers were going every other day, and it was such a disruption to the educational process. Having a day, and it was such a disruption to the educational process, having to go outside and waiting for the boiler department to come in around 20 degree weather. So, I, I totally appreciate the fact that we're doing something now and not waiting till it gets to be so bad that it's such a big disruption to these students and these families. It's just not helping. It's not good.
I would like to add one more thing is, that the board consider making sure that there's something put in place to demolish that building, so it doesn't just sit there and become a void. I mean, it will be the world's nightmare out there, sitting vacant.
Good point. You did talk about that. It's one thing to make the decision to move the kids out, it's another thing to make the decision what we can do with that building. That building's a unique place, it's a unique structure that I'm not sure many organizations can afford to get up and operational the way that it should be. That was a great point. Something to consider starting next year.
So, I, I went to the parent forum, because I really wanted to hear the parents and any community members that came, and just to listen to their perspective, because as a parent, I would be probably in their same shoes. And listening to their parents' questions they had were absolutely great questions that, I mean, every one of them, we had a really good plan to ease their minds of where their students were gonna go. And I think majority of the people that were sitting in the room, I mean, the room probably had 30 of us in here, majority of them felt exactly what you saw today, was the smell, just the, the structure of the building, and they breathe, that's not the perfect atmosphere they want their kids in, but they wanted to be assured that there really is space to move them. They wanna be assured, how is that gonna work? How's that gonna look? Because they also value us doing it at the end of the school year, so they can be able to communicate to their kids and help them transition to where they may be, you know, building in the district. So, they really appreciated our pre-planning and to make these harder decisions now, instead of wait, like you said, when something happens in here and we can't transition that quickly, we can't transition the busing that quickly there, moving the students. Anything you wanna add?
I was gonna say, probably the biggest thing is, the answers that were given to the questions posed were great, because we all know, it's not the kids transitioning. I mean, you saw when we combined the high schools, the only reason the kids were upset was because parents were upset. You know, you tell the kid, hey, you're going here now, they're like, cool. Yeah, I mean, you know, but when mom and dad fuss about it a lot, it creates an issue. So, I think the answers were spot on to parents, they were concerned, one was concerned about more of a special needs child, but that, they're gonna make the transition at some point, you know, even if they've finished at Mayfield for a couple more years, whatever, if that was the case, there's still gonna be a transition. So, instead, we're making that transition a little early. But, it's covered. They already know about it, they already know how to handle it, they've done it before. So, I think that the team was phenomenal in the way that they answered the questions. There was no one here, like, up in arms about it. There were some questions, some concerns, and I think they all handled it well. I think a few of the other parents that were here, I think they wanted to say something, but with all the feedback they got from the other parents that were bringing up the, the questions, they kind of just stayed like, oh, wow, this might actually work out. So, I think it was positive. I think it was a great forum, it worked well. And I think with the non-public comment here tonight for the same reason, I think that people know it's the right thing. Don't wanna see it being, you know.
Not the easy one they did.
I have a little different perspective here, I think, because when we closed Attica, I know it was more for our downsizing purposes and the building was not in as bad a shape as Mayfield is. But, knowing what has happened there, because our church happened to be the one that bought the building. And we have had to replace heating on the roof, we've had to have the roof redone, because it was leaking. I mean, so, you know, you could see, even though that building was not in as near a bad a shape, just to keep it going, you know, just like anything, we've had to do a lot to the building. My husband happens to be kind of like in March. He's had him taking care of the building. And so, I kind of know, you know, and it's like, yeah, you know, it, it wasn't in near as bad a shape, but there's that cost, and to keep it going, you know, and that takes it, it's just, it's a lot more shape.
I think this is a really good reminder to, going forward, we have very few elementary schools at this point. Once upon a time, when we first got on the board, and he said, Mike and I, we went to the individual schools and all that working stuff, for lots of reasons, they shipped it here, which makes sense, we have a separate location and a nicer facility and greet more people. But, consider in the future, going back to these buildings, so you're in them, and so you can see what's going on and what they're really like. You're not gonna have, you don't have to have all of your meetings out there, but I think it used to target a few would go in there every once in a while, because not all of us have the opportunity to go into all of the buildings.
I remember going to Natalie.
I mean, it was an eye-opener for me, because it, it, other than the open class, what used to be an open classroom area, so when I was there, you know, that open classroom in March of 1974 was brand new. Other than putting some walls up inside the open classroom area, it was, except for the fact we had portables outside that are gone thankfully, hopefully never to return to our district again, it's, it's the school I went to.
I, I also think, just, just to bring this all together, and I really appreciate the board's comments, because two hours prior to our community forum, we, knowing our staff, and any interested staff that wanted to talk, asked about Mayfield in particular, but the, had the trickle-down impact that this is gonna have for a little bit of teachers, a pair of pros that are supporting the staff, about the Mayfield staff, made a leadership a number of times. I think it's really important, really, for you to, to remember that this is not the board's first choice. This wasn't this administrative team's first choice, certainly wasn't many community members' first choice. However, it still remains incumbent upon us as the leaders of the district, in cooperation with the parents that participated in all the work we've done in the strategic plan of the last seven, eight, nine years, to demonstrate, well, it's not our first choice, but we're, we're still required to make one. And the hallmark of this district that certainly predates my tenure as superintendent is the peer has been proactive in the face of these tough decisions, and I can tell you firsthand, just because of my connection with other districts as part of what we're gonna do as a superintendent of this, of this institution. That is not the case in many communities. They will wait until there is a room full of people with pitchforks and signs and picketing and all kinds of problems before the board's compelled to make the tough decision. And we've been criticized, but all of the decisions that this board has made in my time here, the closure of Seton, Maple Grove, now Mayfield, selling of Alba, Seton, and Haley to improve the community in other ways, much like Attica, the merger of the high schools, has all proven true to be the right decision, although it may have been made in some critics' minds, be you or she, in advance. Personally, the space issue, right? You have to cross two thresholds in order to make a decision like this. Number one, is the building in disrepair beyond the point of bringing it back, save millions of dollars. If we cross that threshold, we beat that horse, we get it. Okay, the second threshold that has to be met is, do we have the space to accommodate the remain, the students as they are displaced? Well, unfortunately, based on your tenure here, closing a number of buildings, and in my time here as well, we have a lot of experience as it relates to not only identifying the problems, but also preparing solutions to meet those, to meet those challenges. So, one quick example is, we actually, when we merged the high schools, hired a consultant to come in and run a lock schedule for us of the future one LaPierre High School from a staff and student perspective, just to see if we could actually do it. Right? I had Kevin Rose at the time, walk the tape measure of Mark Meisner, and measure the width of hallways, the square footage of classrooms, count the lockers, count the parking lot spaces, look, not just look at the schematics or the one-dimensional drawings that were however many years old. Remember doing all that measuring, Mark?
Yeah.
Because we wanted to be able to tell the community, and then add, what year was the roof updated? How old is the boiler? What's your, which rooms have air conditioning, what doesn't? We knew to a T those buildings inside and out, not just based on drawings, schematics, but firsthand knowledge. This is no different. The day after the bond election, I was walking around with Mark Meisner, we were counting vacant classrooms, we were looking at empty space, preparing for this decision. So, it started in November, it started in November, having to decide, okay, whatever happened on Tuesday happened, come Wednesday, we have to make decisions. Right? So, now we have from November to March, with asking the board to support a decision that's been a long time coming. The last thing I'll say is, we are not, I would say, quote-unquote, concerned about space, but we have to keep an eye, the district has to keep an eye on the utilization of these buildings in the most academically appropriate ways. For example, we don't have specials rooms built into the framework of these buildings. Rooms have, the empty classrooms have been converted to housing specials construction. And because the population has continued to drop, the student population, we've utilized that space appropriately. So, you can't walk into these buildings and say, that's an inappropriate use of space to convert what was a traditional classroom into an art room or music room. That's, we need those rooms. Okay? So, we're gonna live without those because of this closure, and we've done it before, like we always do, right? But, is it necessarily optimal? I say all that to say this, which is a big part of the plan in the bond discussion, that had a lot of people excited, was the grade level reconfiguration and where the elementary program, the middle level programs are gonna end up. So, we talked about that early childhood center concept, that turtle. We talked about the east site being a 1-4 building. We talked about Rowan Warner being converted to a 5-6. We took site visits, we took staff, we took parents to multiple districts, multiple buildings, and talked about what are the most appropriate grade level configurations. That work didn't just go away because the bond didn't pass. So, one way to look at maybe kind of alleviating the space concern is, what is the next iteration of the strategic plan? So, is it a conversion to these four remaining elementary schools to K4 buildings? Relieving some of that space by pulling those fifth grade sections out, the Rowan Warner 5-6 concept, 7-8 exam room, and then doing whatever it takes, what's necessary to get the ninth graders back in the high school again. Those concepts, let's not talk about, you know, the money it takes or where the buildings are gonna be, those concepts got a lot of support from the 600 folks that participated in that strategic planning. So, I would urge the board in future planning, that if the space is a concern, right, because I, if you're hearing me say that, I don't say it's a concern, but I would articulate that the space available now to support some of that work, like special education support, like special instructional spaces, is important, because you, you, you have to realize what the world looks like for some of those teachers when they don't have that available space. Will they make do? Yes. Have they always? Yes. Are they gonna let it impact the experience the kids have? Nope, I've never seen it happen once. Where a teacher unhappy about their space or resources intentionally has a, has a negative experience with the kids, they buck up and they do a great job. Right? But, a reconfiguration and commitment to that could alleviate this problem that we're now demonstrating some concern for. So, that's, I think, that is the, that, that puts it all into context as to why we're here, because we didn't start out 24 months ago with the strategic plan process, thinking the bond wouldn't pass, and we'd be closing Mayfield. Remember, we put a plan to the community that said, we're gonna close three buildings simultaneously. Okay? So, I think that's just important, I guess.
So, I know this is really your ending, on your, what does the next iteration of the strategic plan? This is just really the beginning of the framework.
Great, great.
This is just our beginning of the framework to get us to what does the next look like? And that's a big question. We have a lot to think about and discuss on that phase, but we do need to consider, what does this first phase look like? And unfortunately, the Mayfield Elementary is just not, it's outlived its expiration date. So, we really need to take that consideration this evening, because we have a lot of plans that have to go into place right after this to help us execute this and the decisions, the teaching staff, right?
Well, at a point, yeah, I think, just a point of clarification, that you, that you had correct heard at the parent forum, most of their questions had to do with logistics, you know, transportation, the redrawing of attendance boundaries, what's that look like, who's going where, are more than just Mayfield students impacted? Do we get a chance to see our new school before the school year starts next year? Lots of just kind of transitional stuff, which we also have a plan, parent communication plan, and transitional opportunities, staffing, our budget process, all those things have to happen in the time of the session.
I think it's the matter of where these kids land, no matter what school building it is, I mean, this is as close to red and white as I have as a tie. Red and white were our school colors. We were Mayfield Tigers back then. As long as we can make sure that these kids, no matter where they go, have as good and memorable an experience as I had at Mayfield, then we're all okay, for sure, right? It's not the kids, the kids are there. But, it's our job to make sure that the kids do have that very positive, very favorable experience in there, where they, I was talking to Mark, I mean, right across the street from Mayfield Elementary is this little sign that says, Austin Drive. Mr. Austin was our janitor, he was this guy. I'm 56 and I still remember very fondly all of those times, you know, all of those experiences. Just have to make sure when they go, it's not, get to have those positive experiences and then we bring the parents along, so that they'll, in hindsight, say, good.
And I'm glad you brought that up, because that was really one of the parents' concern is the wonderful niche things that Mayfield does, how do we translate that to where the kids are gonna go? And we're, you know, that's part of the plan, is to take those niches and integrate them into the elementary's that we are gonna feed. And what I think the best about that is, even though our bond didn't pass, we're disappointed about that, but this is one step closer, that our kids have more collaborating, the teachers are bringing the best of the things they did at Mayfield, and they're gonna take it to ownership, our turtle, Murphy. And that's, I think that's, that's the sad but exciting part for the kids, is taking the special niche things and collaborating. Those are the two things that I think are the positiveness.
I remember when we closed Irwin here, and it was a little different, because we took Irwin and just totally merged it in Schidler. So, you know, it was a little different, and we didn't go different places, we just merged the two, and I remember that being, I think at both levels, the same thing. How is this gonna work? You know, we're merging these two who each had their own identity, and it worked fine. Yeah.
That's a great example. Powerhouse that's.
Yeah. And it was just like.
That building that everyone said couldn't work.
Well, and I was like PTL president here, and Renee was PTL president over there, and I remember we just like said, you know what, we're gonna work together, we won't say we're gonna have one person, I was from here, you were from here, let's just merge everything, and, yeah, you know, it worked totally good.
So, I think that we need to make a consideration tonight, so we can allow us to progress through the timing that we need to, to make this an easy transition.
Much as a main, I'm gonna make a motion that Mayfield Elementary School, we closed at the end of 2018, 20, as part of the strategic plan discussed on February 12th discussion. I'll support that.
I have a motion and a support. Mrs. Melbeck?
Aye.
Mr. Noel?
Aye.
Mr. Hagadon?
Aye.
Mrs. Becker?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries to close the Murphy Elementary by the end of the 2020.
We'll start that. Don't start that, it's me.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
I said, "I'm sorry."
I said, "I'm sorry."
I said, "I'm sorry."
I said, "I'm sorry." I said, "I'm sorry." I said, "I'm sorry." I said, "I'm sorry." I said, "I'm sorry." I said, "I'm sorry." I said, "I'm sorry." I said, "I'm sorry." I said, "I'm sorry." I said, "I'm sorry." I said, "I'm sorry."
Start the rovers.
That's where I got it from.
My fault, I think it was a compliment, but, uh...
Okay, thank you for referring to you. We are not, yes, we are not closing our May, just Mayfield. Okay. Okay, so, next action item is to go into closed session to discuss the superintendent evaluation.
Before we made that motion, they come here, Mr. Nolan, they request a closed session.
I would request a closed session to discuss my evaluation, Mr. Nolan. Thank you.
Can I make that? Support.
I have a motion and a support. Mrs. Knoback?
Aye.
Mr. Nolan?
Aye.
Mr. Hagadon?
Aye.
Mrs. Becker?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye.
But I can't wait to see everybody still here when we come back. Just kidding. Bow.
He's in there.
He's earned it.
So, back in the session, superintendent's evaluation, where you go through and read through the performance indicators in the area of professional practice. So, our letter A, governance and board relations, the rating is a 3.8. B, community relations is a rating of 4.0. C, staff relations is a rating of 4.0. D, business and finance is a rating of 4.0. E, instructional leadership is a rating of 3.7. So overall professional practice is a rating of 3.88. Then we move into the score for student growth is a rating of 3. And then moving into the area of progressive, progress, progress towards district roles, these are the district-wide roles, is a rating of 3. So the overall summative rating earned by the superintendent for the 2019, 2020 school year is, overall final rating is a 3.4 or an 86 percent. So that gives them an overall label of effective. Okay, so that is the superintendent evaluation. So we're looking for an approval this evening.
I'm making a motion regarding that, the superintendent's here on the evaluation. Support.
Okay, I have a motion and a support. Mrs. Knoback?
Aye.
Mr. Nolan?
Aye.
Mr. Hagadon?
Aye.
Mrs. Becker?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries 6 to 0 to adopt the superintendent's ear and evaluation. Thank you. So, moving into board member communications for the evening. So, do you have anything they want to share?
Just a quick comment, I just want to say, Matt, congratulations to you with a great evaluation. I'm surprised to, I don't think anyone's here, you, it's rare when you meet someone who sort of personifies all three aspects of one of my favorites in it, which is lead, follow, and get out of the way. And you know when to get out of the way, you know when to lead and you know when to follow. And make it easy for us as a board and I appreciate that, but more importantly, you have certainly improved the lives of our staff and our students. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well done.
I always want to make a comment, first time I met Matt, I went to one of the forums about combining the high schools and I was there, someone said, "You need to go and make sure this doesn't happen." So I sat and listened, you know, that's the best thing that could happen here. And I went up and met him afterwards at the stage and introduced myself and I said, "This is the best thing you got going." I said, "I just want to let you know, leading is, I think here too, leading is not just leading and hoping they're all behind you, you've got to actually turn around, walk backwards, and pull them with you. And I think you've done that for nine years incredibly, so kudos to you. You didn't just get out and make a run for it and hope, you actually stopped and dug the trenches and pulled everyone behind and did the best, so, good job."
Yeah, I have to say that your leadership here, Matt, is actually what brought me and my husband and my daughter back to the community of Lapeer School District. So, all the things that you've brought to the district, all the transformations you've done, your leadership has been not at all, really appreciate it. The other thing that I wanted to say is I wanted just to thank all the parents and the staff that came to the forums for the Mayfield. Just their continued involvement is what this district needs and I appreciate how much they care and how much they want to see us still make proactive moves, which we need to. And then lastly, the most exciting is, all of you have a flyer and this is an evening, March 19th, to showcase our Marshall Plan equipment, it's here. Sretlich wants to show it off to all of us as a community, so it's an open, informal, comment as you can, and if there's people in the industry that you think would be a great invite, let them know. I have some additional flyers if you guys want to take them, get people to come. I think this is a great, I'm super excited to see all this equipment and each other, so I wanted to highlight that too. Anything else? Okay. Superintendent laundry.
Very briefly, just want to thank the board for another quality evaluation cycle. I really like this model, great, just to agree, viewpoint is superintendent and very specific to what we do every day as superintendents, but appreciate your feedback, closed session, take it to heart, appreciate your comments here, it's been my pleasure. Doesn't happen without a great team. Got a great team. The presentations are my favorite part, board meeting, listening to how the goals are coming alive, hearing teachers, hearing coaches, hearing administrators share what the work means to them, looking at my team, you know, all of my hire, replacing their current position and watching them just blossom in their work, seeing things like this flyer for Marshall Plan, you know, that's, that's why we're all here, that's why we all said we wanted to be able to start this, this journey and the evaluation is a reflection of the work we've been working through, so I very much appreciate your support because it takes all of that to make the work. That's all I have. All right, T-Man president.
Thank you. Motion? Motion?
Support.
Support? Okay, I have a motion and support. Mrs. Knoback?
Aye.
Mr. Nolan?
Aye.
Mr. Hagadon?
Aye.
Mrs. Becker?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye.